Okay, I'm gonna call a meeting to order. I'm Peter Pellet, the chair. Chris Cody is next. And our friend here is here as well. This is, I think, just an informational meeting we discussed amongst ourselves that we will probably formally vote on this on a, as a, at a select board meeting. This is not an official select board meeting, it's just a hearing. So, and I'd just like to, just quickly, if I may, just go through sort of a summary of the chronology of what's, what's hap, how long it's taken and the hard work that's been applied for the town plan. The first meeting was December 16th, 2019, and then there were meetings on the, in March of 20, and a series of other events happened, but, and then public engagement, there were two, you know, the surveys, one was electronic and one was mailed. That was in June and August of '21. And then we also did a second homeowner survey in July of '21, community values mapping session in February of '21, additional in-person telephone, in-mail and email interviews, et cetera. August 28th, '21, special public meeting, a formal draft review, plan distributed to bordering towns, on June 21st, October, October 20 edits to the plan made based on comments from citizens, December 20, '21, plan adopted by the planning commission in December 27th, plan submitted to the select board and town clerk by the planning commission, March 14th, '22, select board resolved to hold a public hearing, and here we are. I just, I just want to applaud the planning commission for the, for the terrific work they've done. It's, I think it's a great document, and, and I guess we're gonna have a show and tell or a video or something to...
No videos.
No videos?
No.
Just slides?
Just slides.
Okay. So, do you want to take over on that?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
For holding this meeting. This is statutory.
Yeah, I know.
We couldn't have this. If the select board didn't hold this, we could not have a downtown planning. So, the question is... Planning Commission members?
Planning Commission has changed somewhat. Right now, there were five members. Michael Berry is the chair. The next planning commission meeting is Monday night, I believe, and there'll be one more planning commission member perhaps introduced?
Yes, I'm a town resident. Interesting being on the planning commission, so that's part of the agenda for Monday night.
There's only been one resignation?
Just one.
Okay.
Not everyone's abandonment ship.
(laughing).
Okay, documentation, documentation is, it was key to this project. All the planning commission documents have been posted on the town website, and there's the hyperlink to all the documents. Meeting agendas have also been posted, and today's presentation, a link to that is posted as well. And now we'll get into the meat of the presentation. So, we in the planning commission, or me as a former planning commissioner, have been working on this project for approximately 24 months, holding public meetings, eliciting input from the members of the public, reaching out to them individually, you know, through, as Peter said, three townwide surveys, and on and on. You know, everyone's invited to the planning commission meetings, those are held every third, third Monday. So, the original, when the last town plan was adopted in 2003, so hence the need for a new town plan. A lot has changed, not only in, in the town of Woodbury, but also statewide as well in terms of statutes for town planning. And vision for the future was a collaborative effort, and our English teacher, Michael, had the final edits to it, and that's the vision that we believe fits, fits Woodbury. And town plan, there had been some trepidation about the town plan, that once the town plan was adopted, it compelled the select board to spend money or have the taxes increase based upon the stipulation in the town plan, but that's not so. It's not a regulatory document, and it's not an ordinance, and the last bullet says it does not commit the town to spend any money. And any of the proposed actions, and there were several action items, as we'll see later on in the presentation, within the town plan that may require some spending, but if that happens, we'd have to go through the select board in order for that to happen. And the town plan, again, it's pretty self-evident, it paints a clear vision of the future, affords party status and state regulatory hearings, and those, that's a key element to having approved, an approved town plan, because the town would have a seat at the table at Public Utility Commission regulatory hearings, especially focusing on citing of alternative energy, such as wind farms or solar arrays. So, a contractor couldn't come in and buy a plot of land downtown and just put a wind tower up or, you know, a solar farm. They couldn't do that. We would have to, well, the town would have to have party status and agree to that citing. And, you know, the bullets are pretty self-explanatory, promotes prudent investment, helps manage future costs, and contains an action plan, which we'll get into later, that identifies implementation steps. And the two sub-bullets under "contains an action plan" are key, because once you have an approved town plan, you can leverage current monies from the state. Without a town plan, you're restricted as to the number of grants and the types of grants that you can apply for. So, once we, or the select board approves or not the town plan, it would allow the planning commission and other entities in town to apply for additional grants. So, it achieves its purpose basically with these five bullets. So, mechanisms to implement the plan's provisions are in the implementation program and in the future land use, excuse me, land use map, which we'll get into later in the presentation. Various bodies of the town government have the responsibility to implement the pla, yeah, implement the plan, the select board, conservation commission, planning commission. The plan, again, is not legally binding, and it does not commit the town to spend any money. And the select board, again, must approve not only spending, but any ordinances. Say if the planning commission agrees that our 2000, oh, 19, excuse me, 1973 zoning ordinance needs to be updated, then that would require the steps to go through when you produce a new ordinance. So, I can envision the planning commission making that happen in the next few years. But again, the select board would have to approve that. And a good thing about the plan is that it can be amended anytime. You know, the plan is good for eight years, but within that eight-year timeframe, it can be amended. So, if anything should happen in terms of land use with, in Woodbury, the plan can certainly be revisited and amended as appropriate.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, is there a process possibly for having voter approval of a zoning ordinance?
That would be up to the select board.
Well, I mean, you know, I could research it myself, but I just thought you might know.
Isn't that going on very well right now?
I, I, no, I don't.
Anyway.
Special meeting about zoning. Pretty hot.
Yeah.
That's... I don't know the answer to that either. You know, like, the approval of the town plan, it could be either the select board that approves it, or it could be approved at a town meeting by the, by the town residents. So, that may be true for zoning ordinance also, but I'll look into that.
I have a couple of years to check on that, right?
Right.
But it, but you're, you're talking about this plan, so if that was the case, you wanted expedite that, you wouldn't want to wait until the next traditional town meeting, would you?
No, the select board decided a number of months ago to go the route of having the select board approve it, not the town. Just partly because we didn't have a town meeting again this year, and we wanted to get this thing approved, so, yeah, that would be something that, you know, that's a possibility for the future. And it was the former select board that decided that the select board would approve it, as opposed to having it approved at town meeting.
Okay.
So, plan components, and I won't go all the way through them, but statutorily, there are certain components that are required in the town plan, and if you don't have those, then your town plan won't be approved. So, I put on the, on the handouts table up there, a letter from the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission, and they indicated basically that the municipal, our plan will not be subject to review by the Commissioner of Housing and Community Development, because in essence, it, it hit all the benchmarks required for having a municipal plan. And it goes on to say, "The state agency plan shall be compatible with the municipality's approved plan," so we have to approve the plan, "and we, Woodbury, shall be eligible to apply for additional funds from the Municipal and Regional Planning Fund." So, anyhow, the, in essence, the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission has already signed off on the plan, saying that it met all the statutory requirements of a plan, which is a good thing, because we don't, the planning commission doesn't want to go back and have to rewrite it. Right, Dave? Okay, again, you know, it's kind of somewhat redundant to the timeline. Public input is comprised of three townwide surveys, two electronic, and one mailed survey. Two of the surveys were townwide, one of the surveys was focused just on second homeowners, a lot of one-on-one interviews, community values workshop, three special public meetings from porch forum posts, and monthly meetings. Right here somewhere. I thought it important that I just give you a synopsis of the town plan surveys, the final results, and I'll just go over these briefly. And one of the questions, I think the most important, important, is what do you value most about Woodbury? And you rated these items from one to five, with five being the most important. So, small-town character was number one. Clean air and water was number two. Affordable land and housing was number three. Reasonable taxes was number four, so go figure. Good schools was number four, as well tied. Recreational opportunities was highly rated. And also, 35, or actually more than, nice people was highly rated, too. Lakes and ponds, actually lakes and ponds tied with small-town character as the most valued asset of Woodbury. And lastly, not overregulated was one of the highest rated categories as well. So, these final town plan surveys are on the website as well, under planning commission. So, I thought it important that, you know, we understand why people would want to move to Woodbury. Just as an aside, I sold one of my motorcycles last Saturday, and a person from Asheville, North Carolina drove up with a, with a trailer and loaded it on his trailer and took it away, and his son was with him. And his son's looking for property in Woodbury. Go, go figure. You know, from Asheville, North Carolina, looking for property in Woodbury. Was that, was that as a result of picking up the motorcycle? He was... No, he was looking at it before him. Before him. Yeah.
Ah, how'd that work out?
What, the motorcycle? Oh.
No, but, did he buy some land?
He's still looking, he and his partner are still looking. They like Woodbury because of the, quote, "small-town character" and recreational opportunities. He said he liked the number of ponds that he can see, so, you know, they're actively seeking land here. So, you know, why would you leave Asheville? I guess, I don't know.
Yeah.
So, yes, the motorcycle, it was a Norton. It was a Norton? Yes.
Me, too.
So, the purpose and benefits of the plan, these are just some of them, some of the highlights. Planning for the economic health of the town, revitalizing village centers, things like that, economic development, again, within the village centers, housing needs, see if we can get some affordable housing in town, you know, multi-unit, multi-unit dwellings, accessory dwelling units, things of that nature, and also improving infrastructure, whether it's high-speed broadband or having our electric companies beef up their distribution plant in order to sustain EV plug-in sites for electric vehicles. In order, I believe, in order for Woodbury to institute or to place EV sites, EV charging sites, Harebrook would have to upgrade their plant, their distribution plant.
Oh, okay.
And one of the purposes is a long-term guide and basis for local decision-making, and lastly, in that little bullet, it meets state's requirements for Act 171, Act 174, and the 2016 Comprehensive Energy Plan. Benefits are enabled to adopt and amend local zoning regulations and access grant monies And now we get into part of the plan, which, which was required again, natural settings. And I won't go through each bullet, but we did explore the natural setting aspects in Woodbury, like the percentage of forested, excuse me, lands, lakes, ponds, and wetlands. And it's pretty interesting, we found that 56 of the land, 56% of the landmass in Woodbury, excuse me, is under current use, which I found pretty interesting. Values, again, these were some of the, some of the information taken from the community values mapping session we had in February 2021. The values were hunting and other outdoor recreational activities, and lakes and ponds. One of the main concerns was the water quality and potential pollution in Woodbury. Wasn't there something, Michael, are you a part of a study, studying mill foil or something like that?
Well, there are a few volunteers in town and statewide that kind of monitor the different lakes and ponds for, like, erasure mill foil or any of the other invasive plant species or aquatic animal vertebrates and insects, but...
We hire divers to go down and look for mill foil.
Mill foil.
And to try to catch it, of course, because it costs many hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to create a vision to do that.
Right.
Once, once it gets established, it's hard to get rid of. And there's another program that the conservation commission has sort of been overseeing of just putting out different traps to monitor the spread of the emerald ash bor. So, so far, we haven't found any in town, but we are, there, I think there was some found in Plainfield or whatever, so we're in a circle of high potential, except for the very northwest corner of West Woodbury, is sort of out of that circle. So, so it's probably here, but...
Sure. Can I ask a, 50% of current use, the Meyer property was for the most part in current use, wasn't it?
Yes, all of the Meyer properties in current use.
So, that would significantly impact that percentage?
Yes, about 50%.
Probably 40 of it, at least.
There's 70 persons in you.
70 of the circle, yeah.
You know. About five from the year, four, five of which changes, maybe two, then the rest is all just the same as it was years before.
Does that have an adverse impact on the tax rate?
Well, it's, it's about an 85% rebate discount or whatever on the education tax, which is usually 75 or 8% for town.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't think it has an adverse effect on the tax base, because part of the current uses is that the state reimburses the towns for what, you know, they do pay less taxes, but the state reimburses, I believe this is true, I may be mistaken, but my understanding of the program is that towns do get reimbursement, yeah.
Yeah, that's true. I'm not sure if it's 100%, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to look into that.
Yeah. Well, that was for obvious reasons. I mean, otherwise, you, you know, the town would go short.
Right, especially Woodbury, which is...
Maybe I shouldn't have said adverse, I should have said impact. I didn't want to prejudge anything. Okay, any questions on, on this slide?
I have a good question.
Sure.
It's on the head, too.
The back...
You're talking about the tax impact, and some people have a big threshold, and you guys don't seem to know the answer to that. This company, this spot, Woodbury, not know that. How come you guys all know the answer to that, I get?
Well, I do know the answer to that, Dennis. That's not going to impact the taxes at all for the town.
It's not?
Not at all.
Even though we have a really big town in taxes?
Yeah, no, they're, they're under, they're basically under the same program as the current use program, so...
They are.
Yeah, it won't affect our taxes at all.
Okay, but I'm just thinking of the town taxpayers and all that.
Yeah, yeah, no, it, it won't make a bit of difference.
Yeah.
That, that actually came up in one, in the hearings here.
It did, yeah.
Yeah, the prior owners were in current use, and the new owner's going to be in current use, and...
But they're actually paying less than current owners.
No, they're paying the same, same amount.
They do, the same amount.
It's too bad we couldn't get some of those carbon credits.
Get some what?
The trial. Carbon credits.
We did, we did invest in that, but we just couldn't get any traction.
Now, that's town business.
Yeah, that's how they sustain themselves, you know.
Right, right. In town, one, you know, one of the ways.
Yeah, one of the ways, yeah. All right, natural setting portion of the town plan. The following goes, again, we're developed and, you know, developed through, again, outreach, public outreach, in-person meetings, so the goals are stated here for the natural settings. One of the biggest ones was increased recreational opportunities in Woodbury. That was one of the, the biggest asks during, during the outreach. This is a sidebar, but the shoreline protection bill, I know when it, when it was first passed and before it was, it was fully implemented, there was quite a lot of activity, and I don't think there is, there is much state oversight on that shoreline protection.
I would agree with you in that. There's only one, really one person doing almost all that work.
And it's, it's another example, having spent eight years in the legislature, of how many laws are, are passed, but they're never enforced, and it's a feel-good while you're there, but they really are, for the most part, ineffectual. And it's, it's, it's a problem, I think.
If people see a possible violation and report it to the ANR enforcement division, I've seen them come out and...
I did that, and it wasn't, and nobody came, didn't work.
Didn't work in your case?
No.
Okay, well, in some cases, it does. It's like enforcement of all the natural resource laws.
I don't know, two fines, they've levied, they were both $5,000, which is the maximum.
In Woodbury?
This was down in Southern Park, it's, and it's where somebody came in and you were talking, big, multiple hundred thousand dollar, probably million dollar projects. You could see right where the boundary was, because it had that everything, same, probably the, 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 the state showed up and said, who do we make a check out to? I don't know, I don't know where.
That's it, huh? Deep pockets. The only one I also know about is the Green River reservoir, there was a big sting about that, too. All right, next. Sense of community, this is pretty self-explanatory. However, I made your issue with the survey was, what do we have at a downtown community in, in terms of assembling and sharing? You know, it's, it's an ongoing issue.
Yeah, definitely.
And I hope we spent some effort looking at it, because...
That is one of our priority to do things, is start to go for a village center designation and just address, try to have something in the Woodbury village. Yeah, that's, that's one of the things that the planning commission will be discussing quite a bit.
But it's obvious that it's...
That's what we're discussing, whether that...
Yeah, we've actually...
As we've switched from finishing up the plan, we've been looking at our next steps, and that's one of the next steps that we are working, looking at. While we're moving on, hopefully this gets passed, and then we can go farther, and if it doesn't, well, then we go back to the drawing board. Grudgingly.
Grudgingly. But it, it's tough, because our illustrious forefathers put Woodbury in a swamp, and...
This, this isn't the ideal spot to, to develop, you're right.
It's in a floodplain.
Yeah.
Oops-a-daisies.
Yeah, the state keeps pushing for, you know, development in downtowns, you know, this, you know, between a rock and hard, or a rock and, between a rock and a wetland in Woodbury, there's really no, not much possibility for downtown development.
Real south Woodbury village, that is another village center in, which doesn't have the flooding issues. I'm not sure that people living there would be all that excited about a bunch of...
There's some land there.
...development, but...
You say that, but if that mill pond dam ever went, it would create some, some problems. And it, you know, when was it, back, I have a long, from the, the June, where that flood that...
There's not a lot of water in that, I mean, there definitely, it could create an initial flood, but there's not a lot of water in that mill pond. It's pretty shallow.
They have to pay the state so much every year to, in case it does fail.
Yeah, but, well, this person who unfortunately owns the property that the dam is on has to pay the state a certain amount every year.
And the funny thing is, if you do anything to it, you just open the, the gates, you know, all kinds of liability, and stuff, you better just, you have to just leave your own.
No penalty.
The state, the state would help to take the dam out, but they won't help to try to repair the dam.
They won't what?
They won't help finance any kind of repair of the dam.
Yeah. It would have to be remediation, and we would have to get a grant for that.
Yeah.
But the town plan will offer the grant.
Town plan is the only thing that will give us the opportunity, attention, get it. So, here's the goal statement for the sense of community. And the last bullet, increase the vitality of our village centers, south Woodbury... And the last bullet, increase the vitality of our village centers, South Woodbury is mentioned, and Woodbury, Woodbury Village where we're sitting right now. Now, whether or not that's to do a wastewater study here in this village or to try and find a location for a store, which folks in the surveys indicated that is necessary in town. You know, we'll have to see. But yeah, sense of community was an important part of responses to our surveys. And these are the goals in order to reach those folks who indicated that this was an important part of the town of Woodbury. This may be off, you know, but the Methodist church. I mean, it's not, it's not used anymore.
No. I had a fair amount of communication with the church when we were looking at different stormwater sites. Then one of the sites was designated, the church, so I had to get in contact with them. And, you know, they'd mentioned that, no, there isn't a congregation and they don't really know what to do with the building, which, you know, I didn't ask them if they were thinking of selling it, but there is a possibility of somebody, I think, you know, of it being purchased by somebody, some entrepreneurial call and making that into something. But again, you know, there's no sewage.
Sewering the water, also in the floodplain.
So, you know, the fellow with the business, automotive business there, there's no, he doesn't have water. He doesn't have a sewage there. So, you know, for any of the buildings, you know, the old, the new old store or, you know, they have holding tanks, which are probably, I would think would be sort of inconvenient, so.
But that's the only option, isn't it?
That's the only option.
If you're going to build in a floodplain, that's all we have.
The post office does have a septic system. I don't know if, I think the fire station has something similar in that little green, you know, right next to the Kingsburg branch. But for most places here in town, it's a village.
That would not get approved in modern.
Yeah.
That's the answer to that.
And what about this bathroom?
This is a holding tank.
Separate holding tank.
Yeah.
Yep.
There's no way that we would be able to get that approved.
No.
I mean, that's the short answer.
What would be approved when you say?
A new septic in a floodplain.
Even a holding tank?
A holding tank, yes. That's not a separate.
But if it was a system that needed to be upgraded, it could.
Yeah. I think it's going to be, that would be a tough.
They have to let you do something.
It'd be a tough sell, but yeah. Because we're talking about grant money to do this, and so we would be looked sort of poorly upon for not making forward progress.
One of the things that the planning commission hasn't discussed this too much yet, but we did discuss a little bit and we'll be discussing it more is perhaps seeing what it would cost to have a feasibility study done for some type of septic sewage water system in Woodbury Village. Whether it's, you know, to basically find out if it's even worth thinking about.
You mean like a municipal system?
Yeah.
Has everybody ever looked at it seriously in terms of what?
Not that I'm aware of.
But we have other surveyed work where we have perk tests and things like that that could be pretty useful in informing us as to whether or not that's a reasonable possibility.
Michael, did that village plan get into the wastewater issue in town, in the village? Was that a 2015?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Although I can't imagine it not being mentioned.
Would that be a good starting point to see what that consultant was thinking?
So I turned the heat off just to, so we wouldn't have to compete over the fans, but if people are getting cold, I can turn it back on again.
I'd vote for that.
Put a jacket on.
Don't have much for a jacket.
Like, means I have to speak.
We're not in the show.
Let's just see.
I think that's the intake. Oh, that's the intake. Hi, Ginger.
Let's not do that.
Did we go back to that one about the increase, the housing?
No, yes, we can.
I worked with Callison zoning for a couple of years, about 100 pages. And I thought it was interesting that they allow multifamily dwellings. And Woodbury's not.
Well, we have a multifamily dwelling here.
Two families on it, I expect.
But it isn't in zoning.
I think in the village more so, I think in the rural residential, I think two families is as much as there goes.
And my concern there, we're all getting old.
Pardon me?
We're all getting old.
I'm getting old.
Getting old.
By the minute.
Getting old.
Right this meeting.
You got those dwellings with septic systems that are designed for three or four bedrooms. That's six or eight people. And if you got one person in the house, maybe two, and there's housing shortage, seems like there would be a solution.
There is a program called Home Share where, you know, if you're an older person or a person, you know, living in a situation like you just mentioned, if that person is willing, they can, Home Share will help set them up with other people to live in the house. But that has to be up to the individual in the house. But there is, it's not a, it's not a state program. It's kind of a nonprofit, but it does exist.
I don't have to, I haven't read the statute yet, but I think it's 2020, the state legislature said. They said a lot about accessory dwellings. And it could have quite an impact in the world. It will take care of, I guess, solve this thing about one family, if you need attention.
I think that's mentioned in the town plan.
Yeah, it's in the plan, yeah. You can put a 900 square foot accessory dwelling on a property and not, according to that statute, and not have any issues.
But they would still have to have their own septic system. You can't say that two people are living in three bedrooms, so there's an excess.
They go bad, Alice, I've done it, where somebody converted.
If they convert.
They don't, they convert. They haven't inspected.
Right.
They have the system inspected, no problem. And if the state starts to find out, it's just two kinds of inspections. It's a hundred dollar smaller.
It's a hundred dollar what?
Smaller. And this is all done with cameras and it goes all through and it's a thorough inspection. You think there kind of, kind of shift to the more thorough inspection.
I think another part of that statute is that you can designate 900 square feet, up to 900 square feet in your house within your dwelling as an accessory dwelling unit as well. Doesn't have to be a separate structure. But does that, the question is about the septic, is, so you could tie into your existing system?
It's a part of the, she's talking about something like in your house.
In your house. Oh, in the house. I thought you could have a freestanding accessory building.
That's a different something.
Yes. Well, that's what I'm asking. It's either or. It's what Bob had mentioned, you know, and places, places under two acres, you can put this 900 square foot dwelling. So how does that affect the septic business?
You dress it in, you just can't add a bathroom. You're not changing the septic design or what's going in. It's just changing the square foot use of the property.
Except for swimming would require a separate septic.
Yeah, but that would mean that for your gray water, you'd have to have a dry well or something?
No, you can designate any part of your house or whatever you want. You just can't change the use of, if you've got two bathrooms in your house, you can't change or a third bathroom, which you could say, this half of this house is from the in-laws and this half is remaining. That doesn't affect your sewage in the lab.
I just don't understand how you can have a freestanding building. It doesn't seem, from my hearing, that there's a clear, clear explanation how the septic works, but.
What I've seen is it's all based on bedrooms and it evolves. You could have one person in the house and say, well, you're going to have to design for two. And that's the way it is.
Two bedrooms, which is a big story.
You can have 10 bathrooms, but the bedroom is what drives the design.
Well, the, I believe the planning commission probably will get into accessory dwelling units and requirements when they investigate the zoning.
Yeah, that would definitely be a part of that.
Yeah.
So, hi, can I segue into this with Norman's comments?
Sure.
There you go. He's not able to comment. I'll just read what he wrote because the first part of what he's talking about also deals with housing. So if I like the segue in, that's okay. So this is Norman. To the Woodbury Select Board and Planning Commission, as well as the 10 meetings at the public hearing on the town plan, April 16, 2022, he tells me this. I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend the meeting in person. I would like to submit my comments. First, I would like to compliment the planning commission for their work on the plan. It is very thorough and well thought out. I have a few issues with the plan that I would like to enumerate. Bullet point. It is a difficult balancing act to deal with protection and use. The plan falls short on allowing for recreation of affordable housing. The plan mentions that on average, only two or three permits for new houses are issued a year, a reflection of the difficulty people have in acquiring suitable sites. There is very little land available for housing in Woodbury. Between protected lands, unsuitable sites, and current and proposed strategies for land use in the plan, very little land is left. I suggest a few changes to the plan. First, a strategy that allows for and incentivizes planned unit developments would help. Next, residential development should be allowed on forest blocks and some provisions to allow for continued forestry operations. A significant number of potential sites along the roads should be allowed. In addition, considering the fact that there is currently no central systems for water or sewer disposal in the town centers, the continued use of rural residential areas is necessary. A decrease in density in those areas will make it more difficult for people to be able to obtain an affordable housing site. The energy plan, if I may continue, should not be included in the proposed town plan. The plan acknowledges that the majority of households in Woodbury use renewable wood fuels and then goes on to change the majority of them, 353, to heat pumps. This is inconsistent with both the comprehensive energy plan and the stated goal of maintaining a working forest. The energy plan is extremely biased in favor of heat pumps, despite the negative effects on the power grid and the high cost to end users. The fact that it is flawed is acknowledged by the planning commission in the document itself. There is no requirement that the town adopt an energy plan. Let's not do, let's not include a flawed plan. Thank you for your considering these comments. Norm.
Could we have a copy of that, Ginger, please?
Most certainly.
Thank you. Tell Norm, thanks. So an enhanced energy plan is a requirement to be attached to the town plan. It's statutorily required that we have this as part.
Is it required that it be part of the town plan?
It is.
That we have one?
We have one and that it be included as part of the town plan.
But is it required that that one be included? Or is it a and enhanced energy plan included?
It is required that this enhanced energy plan be included in this town plan.
And you weren't allowed to make any changes?
We did make significant changes to the energy plan.
And who wrote that?
Combination of the planning commission and the regional planning commission. And that thermal, you're talking about. Yeah, I think it's table 8 doc two. It is the thermal energy projections for 2025, 2030, up to 2050. We balked on that. We said, you're crazy, Woodbury can never do this. And Woodbury won't do this. So we adjusted the language to say that that portion of the energy plan doesn't fit the town of Woodbury and that the planning commission will look into it to make it more Woodbury-centric. And that energy plan can be amended, just as the town plan can be amended at any time.
Can it not be amended before it's put in the plan?
It's in the plan now.
Correct, can it not be amended now before it's passed?
Well, that would hold up approving a town plan.
That's what this elect board is here for, to decide whether anything that comes in from the public commits us to ask them to make changes.
See if you can find that 8 doc two. The energy community's in there.
But we have eight more years to make amendments.
I don't want to sign these out without the authority.
So the plan will last for eight years.
Doc two.
And it's not regulatory.
And it's not regulatory.
Oh, this is a big.
So you've got a plan you don't want to stick to.
Is that, let's see, wait.
I'm sorry.
It's not regulatory? In other words, this is.
No.
So what are we using then as far as regulation on? These are, number one, these are goals, okay?
Goals and guidelines.
Goals and guidelines, so we're not, you know, no one's going to put a gun to our head and say, we have to install by 2050, 204 heat pumps and have only nine efficient wood burning units in town. That's ridiculous. And we amended, we understand that. We amended it to say, okay, and I'll just read you this briefly. It's in, it's on page 13 of the energy plan. It has been acknowledged that there are obvious shortcomings associated with the local data based upon the top-down method of disaggregating regional data to the municipal data and associated targets. However, the total target for the new heat pumps far exceeds, and that's key, far exceeds what the town considers to be realistic and feasible. So we're telling them this part of the energy plan is just not realistic. So they understand that, okay? There's only, and this is key, there's only 140 homes currently heat with fossil fuels. That's in Woodbury. The target of 353 new heat pumps appears to be a considerable stretch. You know, I would have used stronger language, but we said they're out of their mind. So anyhow, we understand that this table is flawed and that in the future we will work to make sure that this thermal, it's called thermal sector conversion targets per year. And these again are just targets, gets changed. So it's acknowledged that Woodbury's not going to adhere to that.
This was one of the first things we took up three years ago.
Yeah, that's right.
And those targets were created by the state.
And the regional planning commission, because it watched the county, but not Woodbury. We were separated and we recognized it and we worked on to the uniqueness of Woodbury. But this was something that we were aware of only first started, first started.
I get the feeling that you felt that in order to get regional planning commission approval.
approval, you had to include that stuff?
What stuff?
The enhanced energy plan as they proposed it?
Enhanced energy, it's not as they proposed it. Okay, that's been changed.
Yeah.
That's the final language.
Right.
That we proposed be included in the enhanced energy plan. They took that and they said, we don't know if we can run with this, so they did.
They did what? They approved?
They approved. Yes, right. Because as Dave said, it was the first, one of the first things when we were going through the first draft, the initial draft of the enhanced energy plan. You know, it's like, you're crazy. You know, why would we do that when, you know, we have foresters in town that supply cordwood for heating homes, you know? Not only is it bad economics for the town of Woodbury, it just doesn't fit. You know, so...
We looked at Elmore's enhanced energy plan. It was much more, it wasn't, it didn't have the bias numbers like you see here. And, you know, Elmore is a little bit more relative to Woodbury than Berlin or Montpelier or Waterbury.
Except they're in Lemoyle County.
Well, Woodbury doesn't have to stay in the central Vermont regional plan. We could actually petition to be a part of Lemoyle.
Of Lemoyle.
If we want to. It's a process, but it might make sense.
If they're not telling us what to do...
No. It's just numbers on a piece of paper, really.
Right. And as Dave indicated, you know, we're lumped in, in Washington County, we're lumped in with Montpelier, Waterbury, places like that, who probably would install more heat pumps than efficient wood burning units, but certainly not here in Woodbury.
I'm sorry I didn't bring it with me, but in last week's news in Citizen, there was an article from the Morris Town Planning Commission. They were having a very similar discussion. So if you're interested, anybody interested, I can copy that. I mean, hopefully we're done with it at this point.
And Worcester doesn't have zoning?
No.
So they don't have to do anything?
No, they don't have a town plan.
Right, I know.
It's been a little slow. Ever since that anti-municipal year petition, that happened in Woodbury, that was a long time ago.
That was a long time ago.
Yeah. I think that's something that's...
So Michael, you're on the regional planning commission, right?
I'm the Woodbury rep to the commission.
Right. So you're a member of the commission, and do they discuss this at all?
No.
Okay.
No. It could be something that could be presented to be discussed. I mean, I went to a wood burning kind of state presentation a few years ago. And the state, you know, they used to have an incentive program for people to upgrade their wood burning stoves, which they eliminated. And so now this state, all the incentive programs are for pellet stoves, which don't work when the power goes out. And there are no, there are no pellet makers in Vermont, so everything, it just, you know, why they did that, I don't know, but that's what they're, that's what the state wants people to focus on. And the same thing with electricity. I mean, the state really wants everybody to have an electric car, everybody to have, you know, heat pumps. They're really focused on electricity because of the renewable sources for it, I think. And so on the ground, it's not all that realistic, in my opinion.
Well, meantime, they're trying to shut down the plant over in, was it? Not Highgate, but you know, the one on the Connecticut River.
Righty.
Righty. You know, and here, here in Woodbury, we have Harvard Collector. There's nobody in town, if they wanted to put up solar panels, they can't do it right now because Harvard Collector has reached the max that they're willing to take on. So, you know, we're being pushed, every municipality is being pushed to have renewable energy resources like solar, but our power company isn't able to take on any more of those projects. So, you know, that's the kind of bind that the legislature states to address.
Now they're wading into this thing called the Clean Heat Standard.
Right.
Is that crazy?
And that's the whole push with these heat pumps. You know, it's an electric source, so it's clean energy, supposedly.
Maybe.
Supposedly. But they're, no, I mean, none of this was paying attention to rural affairs. Me. It wasn't there from conception. So that's what we put in the enhanced energy plan, that this really is irrelevant to Woodbury, and we recognize that. And, well, we're sort of being required to have that in there in order to have it approved.
Well, I think our statement is strong.
Right.
Strong, that, you know, we don't believe it and we're not gonna take it anymore.
We're gonna do what Dan will please, sort of.
Do we write that down, please? Can you get that on record? What, we're not gonna take it?
What did he just say?
You can damn well do what we please.
Let's not put that in the jump on.
I think we did that in some sort of...
An accessory item that we don't actually...
And we can leave. Well, there is that element in Woodbury. I gotta say it, I'm proud of it. You know, it's got some independence and...
So, you know, the select board should take a copy of Norman's letter and view...
Yes, yeah.
And then view what we wrote about the enhanced energy plan and see if that is okay.
Yeah, I think he's spot on, especially in regards to those heat pumps and then undervaluing wood required heating.
But I think that you guys have already actually put this in the plan.
We have.
We have. I mean, it's, I think it's fairly well stated in the plan. Without that, without the heat pump and everything else?
No, the heat pump is only a chart, right?
Is it a chart?
A chart.
And it has to be in this. It's not something that... We don't really have a choice. Why? People have to do. Because that's one of the things that was required.
We stated our defiance and our opposition to it, but we did it in a PC way.
Yes.
A non-offensive way. But we did. It was very important. We kept coming back to it, rough and hoss.
And Norman actually met with us a number of times, making that same point that he did in the letter, discussing the candidates.
And to answer, I heard a question regarding whether or not an energy plan does have to be included in a town plan. So, the overarching statute is Title 24, Subchapter 5, Municipal Development Plan, and it's Part 4382, and it's called Required Elements in the Plan. And the ninth required element is an energy plan, including an analysis of energy, resources, needs, scarcities, costs, and problems within the community, blah, 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 a statement of policy on conservation of energy, including programs such as thermal integrity, standards for buildings, and on and on and on. So, that enhanced energy plan has to be a component in the town plan in order for it to be approved.
So you could have started from zero and written a whole other thing, but that, you know, that's a lot of extra work and the regional planning commission was basically working for you, but...
Not with the drop energy plans.
No, no, no. We hired the regional planning commission to help us with the actual town plan. We did the enhanced energy plan on our own, but obviously they were advising us, but in more their capacity as an advisory role, rather than a contracted service.
This was done before, I think, yeah, we discussed that, started this process before the town meeting, where we got to bring more to... We had a contractor. So we were on this early.
Yes, before we started the town plan.
And again, the letter from the regional planning commission say that the town plan does meet all the statutory requirements for a town plan, including the enhanced energy plan, which again can be amended. If we moved to Lemoyle County, we would probably have a different thermal energy goal table. Surely would.
But there's our... Yeah, and I'm not advocating that we do move to the Lemoyle region, but it is an option. We could if we chose to.
What do you know about the difference?
I don't know much. I haven't really looked into that. I know the Elmore, the Elmore plan, which was more relative to Woodbury, they're part of Lemoyle, and that, the way they had worded it was fine, the Lemoyle region.
It was almost the opposite. There were fewer heat pumps than new efficient wood burning units, much fewer. It's just like the inverse.
And the table, same kind of...
Yeah, precisely.
Creative table.
If I was creative, I would have cut and paste that table from Elmore's town plan, energy plan, and just shoved it into our energy plan and see if they caught it.
So if anybody's been following the Clean Heat Standard, which does involve moving to electricity, it's currently in the Senate, and if anybody wants to contact the Senate and discuss it, this is the time.
But the bottom line is, this isn't enforced.
No, it's just a table on a piece of paper.
It's lawful.
It's basically wishful thinking on the space part, I think.
When I ran into some foresters about a month ago, I've been burning wood in the most efficient clean oil there is. It's almost no particulate coming out. I have seeds, but fire, EPA standards. Please shut them down. We can't make...
Book that particular unit, you mean?
Oh, including mine.
Including what?
Including mine, which is what we're in.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It's like, it's like somebody from the oil industry, and instead wrote something, entered at the Congress and said, this is what we're gonna do.
So that you can't access them, you can't buy them, is that what you're saying?
No, you can't. We got 40 orders. You can't even go like, I'm burning, you look at Saxon's.
Isn't that much?
I think we're going backwards.
That's enforced.
All right, on to rural infrastructure part of the plan.
Where are we? What page now?
We're on slide 16 of 32.
16.
Page number...
Page number nine.
Only on page nine?
On page nine, please.
I'll try and speed it up. Rural infrastructure, so again, utilizing the results of the surveys, these are the conditions that they found challenging, conditions for road maintenance, not the road crew, but the conditions that they have to deal with when working on the roads, lack of sidewalks in the village. And the key was retaining the school, and that equals, you know, a huge community benefit in our, at least in our plan, investing in the town hall, funding public safety and emergency management activities as necessary, high-speed broadband and mobile communications, mobile cell service not available to most residents. I think that's being addressed currently with CD fiber.
High-speed broadband is good.
And the last bullet is support transition away from fossil fuels. So any questions on that particular slide? We were concerned too, lack of sidewalks or bike lanes. A lot of folks in town like to bike, and typically they go on, you know, a class four road or a class three roads to do their biking. But once in a while, you have to get out onto Route 14 to access those roads, and there are these little skinny, you know, bike lanes where you, so we are hoping, you know, we can get something done in the village to have a wider bike, at least for transitioning to different roads in town.
You're talking about on the highway?
Yes.
I don't know how you can do that.
Give up our little green here.
Yeah, and then right, back and forth. I mean, it is a dangerous road.
It sure is.
I'd much rather see you put the resource in terms of connecting the railroad track to artwork and then accessing all the trails thereafter.
Sure.
That whole mile of the highway is, that's, and they're really working hard on it. They're finishing in two years. Ninety, that's 93 miles from St. Jade to Swanton. And it's a great ride. It's a great ride. It's pretty level.
All the way.
It's gonna, it's gonna really make a difference, I think, in our economy.
Sure. It's gonna go all the way from, what, St. Jade to Swanton?
Swanton. Yeah, it's fun and done. The western part of the state has been built and being used for quite a few years now.
The biggest thing is the number of bridges in Woking, had quite a few, but washed out. But they're working on it.
They're working on those.
Patriots trying a lot of work there.
But there's a lot of volunteer effort.
Yeah.
Tremendous, which we have to listen to. And we also have a great staff.
So the goals for the rural infrastructure section of the plan are stated in this slide. And the last bullet, increase energy efficiency and conservation while supporting transition to renewable sources. Would heat, it's pretty renewable, I think. Future land use. And again, future land use is, you know, somewhat restrictive in terms of trying to build multi-dwelling houses in the villages, especially this village because of the, just where it is.
Something that some towns have now planned unit developments where you can get 50% more, almost twice as much, than dwellings, by concentrating them into a small, I could say you got 50 acres, and then new is like five acres. Everybody's all one or more, or a lot. And then the rest is all left underdark, city, partially all up into...
Individual plots.
At least water over land, more like a mini village.
You know where you mean, right outside of Big Corner?
Yes. Future land use map, I believe initially we had three future land use maps, and we poured over those. And so in the body of the plan, plan will identify future land use districts which will communicate important components of Woodbury's vision for investment and preservation. So I think the next slide has the land use map on it. Any question on this slide? And this is the, again, the land use map, and the preferred, this is the preferred option. So, we poured over this and came up, but the purpose would be, one of the purposes is to promote increased protections of water quality and habitat. And another change would be the addition of two village neighborhoods, and you can tell, I don't have a pointer with me, but we increased the village neighborhoods. I can't. Can you see my pointer? You can't see my... No, you can't. So we increased the village districts. Right here, we increased it up, you know, Caterrow, and increased the village district. And then in Southwoodbury, we increased it going towards the town garage.
So you think there's developable land up on Caterrow?
Well, we looked at developable land, and there's not much, but there's high-speed broadband there. So if someone wanted to come in and set up some sort of shop, you know, they would have high-speed broadband to utilize it, point of sale terminals or something like that. And in Southwoodbury, there's land going, on both sides of the road going out towards the town garage that could be... that could be utilized for, you know, something like that because there's high-speed broadband. Michael, you have high-speed broadband?
I have it, yeah, Southwood, it goes down on Road a little ways, but not too far.
Not very far.
Not, not down to the town garage.
How far does it go up to Capital?
I don't know. I haven't made it.
Makes a heck of a difference to have it. But wouldn't take that much if it doesn't go, let's see, it goes maybe a quarter of a mile.
When you say high-speed broadband, you're talking about Comcast?
I'm talking fiber optic, right? Yeah, fiber optic. Fiber is the only thing we want.
Is there fiber optic?
No, it's all coax.
It's all coax. Comcast is all cable now. But it would be, but it isn't considered high-speed.
Compared to...
At Arkansas and Lake Hill Road, since we work still a little bit, we have three hundred, you know, megabits.
That's what we have, we're unfortunate.
So we have, high-speed, I think the FCC says it's a hundred megabits down and six or seven megabits up. So I think that's the FCC's guidance for high-speed. But that should increase as electronics get better and fiber, fiber gets dropped off at your home. You'll see a gigabit down. So mapping out the future, so the town plan does contain an implementation program. And there are three separate parts of the implementation program. There are goals, objectives, and actions. And the, the bold sentence in the bottom of this slide, "Successful implementation is a partnership with town, residents, property owners, local and state officials." And I know Jim worked a, a lot on the implementation program. And he led us to coming up with the timeframes, short-term goals, midterm goals, and ongoing goals. And we identified, again, possible entities and partners to help us with the implementation goals. So when they're all stated, just a few, there could be, there probably are more that would help us with the implementation program. And the next slide is just an example of an implementation program. Natural features and ecological systems goals. And the goal statement is in the yellow part. And the objective is under the objective column, the action, responsible parties, the timeframe, whether it be short-term, midterm, or ongoing. So in this case, it would be short-term initially and then ongoing. Possible partners are Land Trust, Vermont Fish and Wildlife, and Forest, Parks and Recreation. And you'll see throughout the implementation program, in the town plan, any actionable items are identified, short-term, midterm, ongoing. There's a statement, the objective, the action, responsible parties, timeframe, and so forth. It's all spelled out. So we have two board members of the Northern River Land Trust here. How do you think the Land Trusts are playing, playing into this?
I didn't quite catch that.
Well, it talks about possible partners, and the Land Trusts are part of that. And Northern River's Land Trust certainly has a presence in Woodbury and around here.
Yeah, well, they definitely should be a partner. I think probably when we did this table, they weren't, they hadn't yet done that purchase.
They had not.
So, yeah, they definitely are an important partner now. I mean, I think an important, you know, going forward, what's gonna be critical is for us to kind of stay on top of all these actions, you know, in the implementation program and to try to bring the different groups together that are supposed to work on each one of them. And that's gonna be challenging because there are so many of them.
And so we're gonna have... Did each one of the Land Trusts, or were you saying, I missed that?
No, I mean, the, just in general, the entire implementation program, you know, has so many actions. And, you know, each one of them requires somebody to do something, you know, some group to do something. And often in coordination with each other. And so the Planning Commission is gonna have to kind of be the coordinator and the motivator, I guess, to get that done. And so, yeah, this is gonna be a lot of work.
I have, I have land in Vermont Land Trust, and, and there are serious restrictions in what you can do once you're in the Land Trust. I assume you have, in the Northern River Land Trust, has similar restrictions as well.
Yeah. So anyway, I guess my point is that we're sort of at the beginning of the journey here in a lot of ways, you know, even though this is a major milestone.
Yeah.
Or you think is Planning Commission thinking of taking all those goals and sort of prioritizing them?
Oh, we'll have to, yeah. Well, we've already, yeah, we've already started talking about that. You know, that some of the things definitely need to get started right away.
As soon as the plan is approved, you're kind of, you're kind of hamstrung until the plan is approved.
We're working, as I said before, the Monday meeting is setting some of the global authority status, like designating your town bill of duty, and also looking at orientation. But we're just, it just started starting process. We're hoping that this gets through. And then we can, otherwise we go back to the Board and start page one. We are, we are looking forward and hopefully, we're looking, we're optimistic.
Because this wasn't properly set up for approval today. This was just a hearing.
Right.
But our next select board meeting is on the twenty-fifth.
Right.
It could be approved then.
Monday is our next meeting, so we'll just continue.
Yeah, we're, we're still, you know, just kind of discussing what we feel the priorities are.
Yeah.
We've got a pretty weird feeling for that, I think, but we're still discussing it amongst ourselves.
Would a representative be willing to come to the select board meeting on the twenty-fifth?
Uh, yes.
Put it on the agenda.
We could put you on the agenda.
Yeah, no, there will be somebody for a full answer.
Before the select board actually votes.
Sure.
And maybe we can make sure that there are any, any addendums that we think are critical before that's on, that potentially...
I, I don't think we have any that are drastic thus far.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, we'll have to...
We'll have to stop.
We don't have time between now and the meeting, we don't have another meeting. So at the next meeting, we'll discuss whether we learned anything today that would, should result in more changes.
Which board, which board are you referring to?
The select board.
The select?
Yeah. And if we, at that meeting, we'll first have that discussion and then we'll decide. Go ahead or not? So we don't really have a place in between to have that discussion.
We just can't get it done before.
Right.
But the next one.
Okay.
And how about?
Yeah, I mean, we do have eight years to work on this, which sounds like, sounds like, sounds like a long amount of time. I mean, you know, from...
Eight years is gonna go by awful fast.
Yeah, that'll go by really fast, considering...
The best version of the plan that we can have to be approved is the goal, and you all have done great. As far as I'm concerned.
I second that emotion terrifically.
All on paper?
Well, none of us, I'll probably be here for the next, for any year, but you, that you passes, it'll probably be here for the renewal.
All right, next slide. The energy plan, which is part of the town plan requirement. All right, and this is a requirement of Act one seventy-four, which was passed in 2016. And again, I think I had touched upon this earlier. It gives town a higher level of deference in department, public service, two forty-eight hearings, which are sightings of renewable energy projects. And Act one seventy-four requires that our energy plan focus on analysis and targets, pathways and implementation actions, and mapping, which are all part of the energy plan. And it's just a table of contents. Analysis, information on current electric use for residential and non-residential. It's a pretty interesting document if you go through it. There's a lot of information about what's, what exists in Woodbury in terms of usage. Targets, these are goals. And again, I can, if I can emphasize goals, these are goals established to provide milestones for thermal efficiency. Again, that, that table eight, renewable energy use and on. And then targets are established for years 2025, 2035, and 2050. Any questions on that slide? And pathways and implementation actions, you know, pretty similar to what's in the body of the town plan. Again, it writes a basis of how Woodbury will meet their target year goals. And again, these are goals. Also, there's a section of implementation actions for conservation and efficient energy use, reducing transportation, single occupancy vehicles, and citing of renewable energy generation. Well, we did get, what was that called, the rural transportation? We do have, that was an issue for a while. It didn't go, it didn't, didn't routinely come by. And it, and now it does, I believe. I don't think it goes to Harburg, but it does. I think there were two bus stops in town.
Yeah.
I think there's a loop now. It goes around Morrisville.
Yeah, they are, see, it goes from Morrisville to Berry, and there's a stop in Montclair, our east of Claire for people who want to go to Montclair.
Right.
So...
They stop the car around, I think, and you can catch another bus or ride.
Good. I don't know how long that's been, but I...
It was a three-year program, and this is the third year.
Was it the last year?
Yeah. Whether we'll continue or not, it's, I mean, it's not...
Yeah, it's grasped in or utilized. Especially in rural balance.
And also, within the body of the energy plan, there's a mapping section. And the four bullets indicate what that mapping section intends to do. And the third bullet to me is very important. It allows the opportunity to identify preferred locations for renewable energy development.
I ran into a situation too, Calus, where the solar panel company told me to not exert turns, stayed off.
To do what?
We could put this here, presuming it can't, can't stop us. And I didn't go to see what the state law was. They were pretty firm about it.
Well, this is what Wester just ran into.
Are you talking about solar?
Solar panels. This, this was in a design controlled desert, I thought of that.
These are, these are residential or are these commercial?
Residential, yeah.
What's that?
Residential, yeah.
So some, so you were told by the solar installer that there was no option?
That that's, yeah, just stay off.
There was a case in Southern Vermont, not within the last year, where the Act two fifty, or no, the Public Utility Commission agreed to deny somebody's solar installation because the neighbors didn't want to look at it.
This is, this is going on the other.
All right, that's all I have on the enhanced energy plan.
Good.
Good. Okay, next steps for the select board, is hold a public meeting. That's today. You're holding a public meeting. Take comments from participants at the meeting. If warranted, make substantial changes to the concept, meaning extent, or extent of the proposed plan. If that happens, then you have to send the plan back to the Planning Commission. And they would edit the plan accordingly. Then the Planning Commission would have to hold another public hearing. And then the timeline would kick in. The select board would have to hold another public hearing. And all the things that go along with holding a special public meeting, morning, it, newspapers, and things of that nature. So if no changes to the plan are needed, then the select board adopts the plan as written, or not?
Well, I'm just gonna ask, substantial is sort of a vague term.
It's meant to be vague.
Yeah.
So if, so if you, if you believe that the Planning Commission hasn't hit all the statutory requirements in the plan, that would be substantial.
Correct.
Second would be if we, if you thought our recommendations, remember that map where we increased the size of, of the villages? If you thought that was out of line, that would be a substantial change, because that's land use. So that would be a substantial change.
Correct.
Anything like that. You know, I'm sorry I didn't categorize it as...
That's fine. It's just that we want to be clear for the public what a substantial change would be. Because we haven't actually addressed thus far anything in this that would be considered substantial.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, wow, that's good. And if the select board chooses not to adopt the plan, then we go back to square one. There has to be, in other words, good reason to not to adopt the plan. And if the adoption process, you know, takes a year or longer, then the plan is considered rejected out of hand. Okay, if the select board does adopt the plan, then you could submit it to the Regional Planning Commission and also to the Department of Housing and Community Development. Those, both of those submissions are via email, and I have their email address. Lastly, any comments or input?
I have one. I just don't understand how substantial change, zoning, we consider a substantial change.
Well, we have, yeah, it would be if there, if there are...
If you have people who live on the other side of Route fourteen, say, head to Harburg, that have a nice big piece of land, and you change the zoning, what's that gonna do to save for housing? You're talking about housing on side, hills and banks. They actually have a nice plot of land out there that could be easy to develop. But you're gonna change the zoning, is that gonna affect those people? What I understand...
This, this document, the town plan, doesn't change zoning. Doesn't change zoning at all. It's not an ordinance.
Correct.
Where zoning is an ordinance.
But it's in the plan.
It's not in the plan to change zoning.
It's not?
No. Could possibly change zoning, but it's not something that's stated in the plan. In order to change zoning, you would have to take a look at the plan. Planning Commission would then make a recommendation that zoning should change here. that zoning should change here or the, you know, lake shore or Route 14 for that matter. That document would then go to the select board, who then would hold a public hearing.
Then it has to go to public hearing.
And then it's just, Dennis, it's a process. It's not something that we, it's not something.
That answers my question.
So the zoning, the whole zoning ordinance, I mean, the town, or any town, can't do, make any changes to existing zoning ordinance until there's an approved town plan. And then the whole process for redeveloping or changing the zoning ordinance is pretty laborious. And it's very similar to what the planning commission went through in creating the town plan, where there would be plenty of hearings, people with voice objections. You know, so it's, it's a whole other process. That's, it's pretty, it's pretty cut and dry how it proceeds and very similar to what happened with the town plan too.
Really, I'm going to ask this, because if you look around the town, as far as, you know, we're talking about building housing, letting people move to town, more people, more business, that is just a good plateau on that side and it's all registered to people. And in all town, you could have some housing. Me personally, I've got to see some housing. I'm not the housing department. Basically, a lot of people, you've got town, more business, you're going to have other changes. You've got eating sidewalk, still.
Right, more kids in school.
More kids in school.
Right.
And that's why it's going to scare people with the zombies. You could potentially kill small housing companies.
So this is still a recommendation?
Yeah, I understand. Just clarifying.
In the meantime, existing zoning is still in effect?
Correct. Yeah, well, I understand. No, I'm just talking about the changes in the future.
And, you know, with, with the town plan, the way it's worded in those areas like up on the Caber Road, where we sort of designated as a potential for development, there, you know, the zoning would probably, you know, address that there wouldn't be restrictions. Or, or there might be certain, hopefully more realistic.
Not, I mean, that's that production point or something.
Yeah.
I understand.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So on commercial, commercial buildings, it would make sense that Route 14 should be, you know, if, if, so long as you could find places to put it properly, would you need to have, because you don't have commercial zonings all along Route 14. It's, it's basically in these two centers, right? So if, if somebody wanted to put a commercial business on Route 14, what, they would have to go through the state and, and the town to do that? Did you all discuss that at all in terms of?
They did discuss it because I suppose that right now, there's no commercial development allowed anywhere except in the villages. If you had designated Route 14 as a corridor for potential uses, that would make it easier when it comes to zoning to, to allow that. I mean, you probably could allow it under zoning anyways, but it would just be nice if it was in the town plan.
I think we did mention something about the Route 14 corridor.
I believe so.
It is. I'm sorry, I was just.
It'll take a while to find it, I guess.
What document is that? Is this the, in the town plan?
I'll look for that because I know that we did.
This one?
We did discuss that.
We did, yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
I'm not sure what page it's on, but it is mentioned.
It is.
It is very, it was actually stated. I just can't find it right now. That, that the entire Route 14 corridor is, is eligible for commercial.
Okay.
I know we, we did that.
Because that was actually a document made.
Yeah, we put that in there. Unfortunately, we don't have it all.
I don't have it memorized. I should.
We don't have a link.
You can't just Google this?
Well, you could, I could.
You can do a search document thing, I think.
So, yeah. If you go on the website and pull the document down from, and just, just do a search.
Search.
Search for Route 14.
Okay.
Because the weapons in the corridor are pretty hard. It's not much to be watching.
But there, there isn't much.
There's not much. No, there isn't.
Well.
But there is some.
There is some.
There's a little.
You need to stare up on Parker's property, you know, that subdivision and then, anyway. Gilbert's, you know, in that area, you know, there's some spots.
But there's nothing about the town plan that restricts that. That's the value. It's an opportunity for us to redesign some of our zoning ordinances. But without this, we can't do any of that.
That answers my question.
What's that?
That was my question. Is there any restriction for such as?
None of this. That's a conversation for, once the town plan is, is adopted, then every one of these changes to a zoning ordinance have to go through its own set of rules.
Pre-pandemic.
Which is not a terribly rapid process, but it would be reviewed by, it would be reviewed by the town.
Where you can just walk.
Right. Proposed, reviewed by the select board, proposed to the town, and then moving from there.
So Dennis, just walk along the beach?
Yeah, yes.
Pick up fossils.
There's not restriction.
That's the beach.
We're not eating marshmallows.
Because it looks like a beach in Hawaii, but it's slightly off. But it has a lot of similar characteristics, the landscape on the beach.
Never been to Hawaii. Your wife's from Hawaii, isn't she?
Well, we lived there for, she lived there a bit longer than me. We lived there together for about 20 years.
Opportunities for fighting.
She's originally from Michigan.
The town by itself can't, can't do things that you, that need to do, or that the state.
Yeah, everybody thought.
For federal, everything you have to do. You need to have fun and be able to do it.
Right.
And no, because what we do is you can't do what they want you to do. It's got a town plan.
It's 20 years ago.
So you're, you're, you know, our place. So we have to.
Yeah, overall, we.
Otherwise, we can't apply for the funds that were actually required, just huge, huge projects that were expected to do. So we are in a strange.
Ripped it somewhat. Yeah, we're thinking about going back.
It's getting funny, too. So we have, we have to have this, so we went forward. You know, when I, when I came on to the board two years ago, like, why do we have, why do we even need to do this? And then watched it, you have to, it's mandated, we have to do it. So we've done the best we can do with what we can. I'm very proud of the work we've done.
You should.
I want to thank Jim and Skip because I think, they probably really do. But Skip's been really the steward of this. And I want to publicly state a grateful I am to him and his stewardship through this two-year process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Skip.
And so to the town, this is, this is major. Well, that's all I have. Planning commissioners, do you have anything more?
No. So I'll ask for any other public comment. And I'll say a formal thank you to the planning commission for the efforts that they've done as a select board member. And I will turn it over to the chair of the select board to.
Well, finish up. Yeah, I, I, I think it's very helpful. I think it's, it's going to definitely shape the future of this town, which, which we need. And, and it's, this is, this is major. So I don't expect that there'll be any changes to the plan coming from the select board. So on the 25th, if somebody wants to come in from the planning commission, we will, we will, we'll approve this on the 25th.
Well, first we'll discuss whether there's any changes.
That's correct. We have to first get our public, make sure we have enough.
I'd say that, but by the tenor of what we've discussed today, I don't foresee that happening, but, and I hope that doesn't happen.
No, can't say it, yeah.
So, any other comments? If not, then I think we can close the meeting and thank you all for coming.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.